I will call tonight's meeting to order. This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for the live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the question and answers functionality tool. Actually, no, we're not. It's only by -- you can view it but not participate via Zoom. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boongarden.
Present.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Mr. Chaffin, would you please read our closed session items for this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two items scheduled for closed session. The first is Item A, Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 5495-7.6. Agency-designated representatives are Diana Langley, City Manager Natalie Springer, Human Resources Director Brad McIntyre, Community Services Director Spencer Morrison, Finance Director Ben Moody, Public Works and Development Services Director Brian Baker, Police Chief Jesse Alexander, Chief Fire Chief Michael Jarvis. LCS employee organizations are Yuba City Police Officers, Police Sergeants, Yuba City Firefighters Local 3793, Yuba City Fire Management, First Level Managers, Mid-Managers, Police Swarm Mid-Managers, and Public Employees Local Number One, Unrepresented Employees or Confidential Employees, Executive Services Employees. Item B of closed session is Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code, Section 5495-7B1, Positioned City Manager.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the public concerning the closed session items? It's a hearing done. We will go into closed session. All right. We will call to order this regular meeting tonight. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. This meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified on the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boongarden.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
This evening, we will have the invocation by Reverend Loffman, and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance by our own Sierra Wakefield. I would ask that you would stand, and prior to the invocation, let's pause for a brief moment of silence in honor of those who have fallen victim to tragedies since we last Let us pray. Good and gracious God, Author of all our freedoms, guide the people of California in the election of officials and representatives, that our rights, the rights of all people, may be protected, and our state enabled to fulfill Your purposes. We pray You send down upon those who hold office in Yuba City the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with resolute purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Renew, we pray, the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Guide our leaders in finding solutions founded upon Your love and grace that bring an end to the violence in our land. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression, that peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with different talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. All this we ask in Your holy name.
Salute pledge.
Of what allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Mr. Chaffin, will you please report out on our closed session items tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. And is there any modifications to the agenda by any member of the council? Hearing done. The agenda stands. The first item we have tonight is going to be our ceremonial presentations, and we have Clint. Is he with us tonight? Clint, there you are. Nice you to join us tonight. You can please come on over and give us the presentation on Open Counter.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Just a quick intro. So Clint Nittle is with Open Counter, our software. It's not our -- it's a software that we're looking at to bring to the city to help kind of be that front door, to be a little bit more usable for the customers. And so Clint is the rep for our area and definitely could go through the details. And so please feel free to ask questions for both of us as we go through it.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I appreciate you very much for having me this evening to present. Again, my name is Clint Nittle. I'm the Director of Sales at Open Counter. And at Open Counter, we provide modern software products and services that are designed to improve the experience that citizens have working with their local government, and specifically as it relates to opening a business or completing some sort of residential project. You know, the fact of -- really, the fact of the matter is that zoning and permitting regulations are very complex in jurisdictions across the country. That's just what we see day in and day out. And that complexity makes it very challenging for the general public to navigate and understand the requirements, the cost, and the process that they have to go through to open a business or to do any sort of residential project and stay in compliance with that project. And what happens in many cases is that the public end up having to be guided through the process by city staff members, which is very time-consuming and very challenging for everybody that's involved. And unfortunately, even with the best of intentions by staff, what happens a lot of times is that the general public either decide that they don't want to move forward with their project because it's just too difficult of a process, or they don't understand, they may decide -- or they may decide to move forward and make a mistake or miss a step, causing additional time, additional complexity, additional cost, or we see in a lot of cases where they actually decide to go to another city to open their business because the process is easier for them and navigating easier to understand. So at Open Counter, we provide solutions to alleviate those challenges and make it easier for your customers to engage with their local government, as I said. So the solution I'm going to show you today is actually a zoning business and residential solution to simplify the process for folks to understand where their projects are allowed, what permits and requirements they're going to have for their projects, the cost of those projects, and the process to move forward with the city. So before I jump in and show you a demonstration of the software, I just want to start, I think it's important to give you an example of the expertise that our company has in supporting communities all across the state of California. We've worked with these 18 different agencies across the state, and we've built portals handling business, commercial, residential, and zoning, and also special event projects kind of across the board here. In addition to these 18 jurisdictions, we've also configured over 100 portals for cities and counties of all sizes throughout the United States in 2013. But we actually got our start here in California, and this is the state where we've done the most configurations. So in interest of time, I'm going to walk you through a demonstration. But I mentioned, in interest of time, I want to keep it fairly brief, so I've recorded a video demo that I'm going to narrate over. So let's see if this will press play. All right. Before I press play, let me just kind of set the stage a little bit. So imagine that you are a first-time entrepreneur, and you are interested in opening a pizza shop in your city, right? So what do you do? You go online and you Google "how to open a pizza shop in the city of Petaluma." That's the example I'm going to be using today for you. And you're guided to the city's business portal. This portal that we configured for Petaluma is going to walk the entrepreneur through the requirements of where their project's allowed, based on all the specifications of their pizza shop, what the permits and requirements will be, what those costs will look like for them, and then what process they actually need to follow in working with the city, and then kind of handing them off seamlessly to the different processes that the city has in place today. So just put yourself in the shoes of that first-time entrepreneur who has never opened a restaurant before and is really just starting this process as a novice. I'll just narrate over the video. So the applicant's going to click "calculate my permits," and this is going to walk them through a five-step process to get a full overview of their project. So the first thing we do is we meet the applicant where they are. We ask them, "What are you trying to open? What is the name of your project in your natural language?" You know, how we speak, pizza shop, right? We map that to the city's land use code, and you can see that restaurant, café, and coffee shop is the appropriate land use here in Petaluma. That takes the applicant to a zoning map specific to that land use. We ask some additional footnote questions to refine the permissibility, so you can see your permitted, additional, or prohibited. The applicant can search for their location by entering an address very easily, or they can zoom in on the map and get to parcel-level details. And then on the location, we give them a full summary of all the project location details that they'll need, then easily get them back to the map so they can continue through the process. So now the applicant knows, okay, based off where I want to open my pizza shop and the information I've entered, it's allowed at this location. Now we're going to ask the applicant some additional questions to determine what are all the requirements that I'm going to need to open my pizza shop in the city. So these questions are similar to the questions that would be asked at the front counter by staff members. We're just allowing the applicant to be able to do this online on their own, self-serve, before they decide to move forward with their project. So you can see, as we're asking these questions, the requirements are populating on the right-hand side. We give further description and allow the applicant to drill down on some additional information. Next. On the next page, we're going to ask some additional questions, and these questions are all geared around fee calculation. So we want the applicant to have a good estimate on what their fees are going to cost for all these different requirements that they're going to have to fulfill. You can see, as they answer these questions, the fees are recalculating in real time. Again, these are similar to the questions that they would be asked by staff members at the front counter. We let them drill down and get some more specific information on the fees, so they have that transparency and more information if they need it. We take them on to the next page. So on this page, they're going to have a full project summary: location, requirements, fees, parcel-level details, and all the questions and answers that they've entered. They can download this to a PDF and share this with members of their team that may be involved in the project with them. They can also bring it into City Hall when they meet with staff for the first time, so they start from a more educated and prepared standpoint than right from square one. Right now, they're setting up their project in Open Counter so they can return back to it at any time. And this is the, what we call, handoff page. So this is where we actually guide the applicant to the city's application sources as they stand today, so whether it be an online application, an apply-in-person process, or maybe a PDF form. This is a different version of that same page that we configured for the city of Fort Worth. This actually goes step-by-step rather than organizing by department. So we tell the applicant, "You have to do X, Y, and Z in this specific order with this specific jurisdiction." And these page -- this page is configured specifically for the specificities of their project, the process at Yuba City, and gives them, you know, that full step-by-step roadmap. So as you can see, this was about a 2 minute 50 second demo, went through a little bit quickly, but our average, what we see across our customer base, averaged between 5 and 10 minutes for an applicant to get a full project summary before they go into City Hall. And we also see that many times applicants will map out the project at multiple locations just to be able to compare and contrast maybe a couple of restaurant locations or business locations they're looking at. All right. So I want to go through our proposal for Yuba City with you all today. So the Open Counter proposal, we're proposing three of our products and services: our zoning check portal, our business portal, and our residential portal. The zoning check portal serves as an easy-to-use zoning lookup tool that educates the applicant on where their projects are allowed throughout the city. Those were those first two pieces of the demo that you saw with the land use search and the map. The business portal is the portal that will educate the applicant on all the requirements, cost, and location for opening or expanding a business in the city. And a residential portal is similar to the business portal, but it's specific to residential projects. So again, cost, requirements, and process for doing any sort of residential project of any type for developers and homeowners. Open Counter platform is offered as software-as-a-service, so it comes fully managed by Open Counter, and it is inclusive of all the fee regulatory and procedural updates that the city may make, so if you're zoning ordinance change or your fee schedule changes, we make all those changes on your behalf to make sure that the site is up-to-date and accurate for your customers. It also includes security updates, ongoing maintenance, customer support, and any enhancements or new feature rollouts that we have within the portals. Those all come with your annual subscription. And also, lastly, all of those handoff or those links to your application sources, whether it be a business license through Exella or a building permit through Exella, or maybe a PDF form that they need to fill out, or an apply-in-person process. We link them directly to all those processes, and that's all included in your subscription as well, in addition to an administrative portal for city staff to be able to see all of the projects that are being scoped throughout the jurisdiction. So our fee structure is that, as software-as-a-service, we consist of an annual software subscription and a one-time implementation fee. We're proposing a $10,500 annual software subscription discount and a $13,000 implementation discount to Yuba City for procuring three portals at the same time. And that brings the cost to a one-time implementation fee of $20,000 and an annual ongoing subscription of $50,000 for Yuba City. And that's based off of our population, based off of tiered population pricing. So now I want to walk you through some results that can kind of show you what cities in this area and across the country are seeing from these portals. So I've got three examples of 12-month results here with the city of Concord and Fremont, California, and then the city of Pearland, Texas. I was looking to find jurisdictions that were, you know, within the same population wheelhouses as Yuba City. So you can see with the 12-month results of Concord, Fremont, and Pearland, we've measured three different types of ROI, right? We work with our customers to measure the impact that the portals are having on the community, to help justify the cost, and to give a lot of information around the development activity that's happening from your customers and from your citizens. So the first thing we look at is estimated staff hour saved. This result, those calculations are done based off of the amount of questions and projects that have been redirected from the front counter online to open counter. And you can see with these three jurisdictions over 12 months, we've ranged between about 1,000 and around 1,600 staff hours that we've estimated that we've saved over the last 12 months. That results from between around 3,100 and close to 6,000 projects that have been scoped through these open counter portals. Those are individual projects. And you can see the customer completion time, which is a way to help quantify customer service delivery. If they're able to move through the process and get all their information in a quick manner, then that customer service, we've found, has been higher, that service delivery. So you can see the average completion time for those jurisdictions is between 5 and 10 minutes, as I mentioned a little bit earlier. And the last one I have in the lower left here is the city of Vacaville. They're a newer customer of ours. Their sites went live eight months ago, and since that time, they have, we've estimated that we've saved about 913 hours in staff time from redirecting those inquiries online. That comes from a little over 1,300 projects that have been started through Open Counter with an average completion time of just under 10 minutes. So that concludes the slides that I plan to go through with you all today. I just want to kind of wrap up my presentation by saying that at Open Counter, we're very confident in our ability to deliver a best-in-class product and service to Yuba City that will really make it easier for your citizens to work with and engage with the city around development projects and really help to, really help to advance development and really help to promote economic development throughout the city. So I appreciate your time, and I welcome any questions you might have.
Is there any questions from the council? Sir?
To the mayor, thank you for the presentation. Been excited to see this. Definitely, I think, is something that can help us. Two quick questions. One is, when Clint's pizza shop was entering in, is there visibility to the city to say, "Hey, look, you've got someone who's in"? I mean, is there a notification that lets our staff know that, "Hey, there's somebody in here, and they're taking a peek"?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. So on the admin side of Open Counter, and I can share some examples, you know, I can email those out or provide those to you, and my proposal has some screenshots of that, we capture all the project information, whether the applicant exited Open Counter on the second page or they went all the way through. We capture all that information. We provide an analytics dashboard that shows where they came from, what projects they were, what kind of project they were looking to do, popular land use codes. Basically, everything that is entered by the applicant is captured in the administrative portal, and we can provide that information, you know, through reporting and whatnot. So staff are able to see in real time as those projects are being scoped by the applicants. Also, you may have noticed as it was going through the demonstration, there's a contact city staff link at the bottom of each page. And what that's designed to do is to give the applicant an opportunity to, without leaving the session, send an inquiry into city staff, which goes into the admin side of Open Counter, but also can be routed via email to, you know, any number of staff members that you'd like it to go to. So that way, instead of just, you know, getting caught up on a question and picking up the phone, making a phone call, they can still hopefully finish the session out and be able to kind of engage that way. And all those inquiries are then tracked in the admin portal, so that way, at any time, someone can go back from the city side and see the conversations that have happened with the citizen.
The answer to my second question was, at the end, when the applicant's done, is there the opportunity for them to actually request a meeting? Is that just a general email then, or is it say, "Hey, look, I'd like to have a meeting"?
We can configure in a few different ways. That ordered handoff page I showed at the end for Fort Worth, what we've done for some other jurisdictions is actually a development meeting and given them information on who they need to contact, or we've worked with some jurisdictions that actually proactively go out and contact that individual. So yeah, that order of operation, however the city would want that set up, you know, we configure it custom for that process.
Final question is, when they get done, they can actually download all the stuff that they got, so they've got their own package.
Yep, and it gets emailed to them as well.
Okay.
And PDF. Yep, and staff members on the city's side can see it as well.
Any other questions?
To the mayor.
No.
I love the presentation. I was super excited about the zoning parts of it, too, like, you know, allowing people to understand where they can possibly establish a business or buy a house or build a house. My question is around a community that has approached me about language barriers. So how does this translate into any other languages?
Yeah, absolutely. So accessibility is extremely important. We want to, we want to give, we want to promote inclusion. We want people to be able to engage with, you know, with the communities they live in. So the portals, we actually work with a natural language translation provider who we partner with, and they actually, we can translate right now into almost 40 different languages. The city of Atlanta, I think, has about eight right now with us. They have the most, but we're seeing pretty much, I would say, 75% of the configurations we do do come with at least one language translation.
That's fantastic, yeah. Spanish and Punjabi, I think, would be two, you know, really common natural languages in our area amongst English, right?
Right, sure.
But that's great to know. I really, I'm excited about this possibility and finally getting into that century that we're all working in, right?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for the question.
Any other questions from my right? Want to follow up on Councilwoman Boongarden's question. It's, I get the fact that it's an interface and you have the dashboard and the admin, but that's going to be a learning curve. So does this not only give you that interface, but can it be configured to send whoever the key person is an email alert to let them know something has been, you know, loaded to the counter?
That's a good question. So we haven't had any configurations where, when a new project gets started, it sends a notification out. That functionality may be possible, so I'll follow up with that answer for you. But what we find with the vast majority of our customers is that they typically have one or a group of people that either rotate or that are just, you know, kind of assigned to the portal to do kind of a daily check or to kind of check in periodically. But I do see that it would be useful to kind of have those notifications go out. So I can follow up on that for you. We do have the notifications for any inquiries. So if somebody submits a question, that immediately sends out an email notification to whomever we set it up to receive.
And that part's perfect because we want, you know, as a former mayor started a few years ago, open for business, this is the next step, you know, to truly make the accessibility. My only concern is just it getting lost in the cyber world out there. Someone loaded something, someone didn't check the dashboard, or they overlooked it on the dashboard, and I know that different, like CRMs that I use, will send those notifications. And that way, it's more difficult to lose things in the system. Ben, Mr. Moody, I'm just curious, I mean, looking at that, if you look at it on an annual basis, it's about six-month worth of time that we're saving. Can you tell us how this is going to affect your productivity? Because I know you've been working with hands tied behind your back at times down there.
You know, so we're hoping, two parts. We're hoping that it pays for itself for the, with the time savings, and then also with the value to the constituents, just because there is a lot of, there's a couple things going on. One real positive, too, is that we have an existing Exella software system that we run our code enforcement and our building permits through and our planning. And so this will prep that and then tie into the building software. And we could take that to different levels that Clint could get into. So kind of, it does the pre-application and does a lot of the front legwork to get them into the building permit process. And then regarding the rate of return, yeah, you always wonder, you want to make sure it just doesn't get lost and doesn't get used. And so what our thoughts are is that through the budget cycle that you're looking at today, there's some money programmed for this software. And that is for a three-year period for us to evaluate it, get it up and going, and seeing if it really, if it does what we needed to do for our community. And so that's how we're planning to tackle it, is that we evaluate it, make sure we're getting our value out of it, and then really promote it by staff. So it helps, because there is a lot of time, just every time a piece of property comes up for sale, what's the fees? What are the costs? And there's a lot of dynamics, as you've heard, well, what's the size of development? What type, how big of a water line do you need? And that's where they could really get, sit at home or sit in their office and kind of work through those questions, and it preps them to give them, hopefully, a more accurate, you know, with a printout that has that info.
I appreciate it. And yes, we do get those questions and the standard responses. Let me put you in contact with Mr. Moody, because it's, there's so many technical things. The one thing on the list, and I appreciate the presentation, it was great, that I looked at all the cities that are, one thing they all have in common, they're all thriving cities that are growing. Look at Elk Grove, look at Placer County, look at the different ones up there. So thank you for being here tonight. Is there any other questions from the council? All right. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
All right. We will move on to Agenda Item 2, Public Communication. This is, "You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other item within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group." We do have one written request tonight, but before we get to that, I'm going to ask our attorney, Mr. Chaffin, to give us a recap, as we did at the last workshop, as to how parliamentary procedure works and what we follow in the chambers here so that there is no confusion. So, Mr. Chaffin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. In essence, there are two types of public comment. Public comment for items actually on the agenda under the consent or business items, or public communications, which is actually where we are right now. For items that are on the agenda, we typically follow state law and Rosenberg's rules, and they govern the process. Essentially, the item is called, there's a presentation typically by staff, there are questions from the city council, and then at that point, the public is given an opportunity to comment on the agenda item. Now, the comments are directed to the city council. They're not directed to staff or their members of the public. It's not a public question and answer or debate format. It is for providing public comment regarding the agenda item. Once public comment is closed, council may question or debate the item, and then a motion is usually made and a vote on the item, and then the next agenda item goes forward. Now, with regards to public communications, where we are right now, there is no staff presentation or anything like that. The reason is, is because this is for items that are not on the agenda but are within the city's jurisdiction. So this would be the public's opportunity to speak on anything else that is not on the agenda. Again, the same public comment rules would apply. They are public comment. It is not public question and answer or debate. There's no questions directed to members of the public or staff. It is comments to the city council regarding whatever matter that is within the city's jurisdiction. So I'm available if you have any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. So the written request is Mr. Piara. Joel, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, this is my third time standing in front of you for the same subject. I thought that somebody from the city would have approached me to settle or get this problem solved, but it has not. So it has just come to my attention that I am going to have to go ahead and make the meeting with the representative of the city, which would be Mr. McIntyre, since he is the one that who wrote the report, and I would like to go into it to see where and I would like to go into it to see where he assumed or he had everything that Mr. Dedar S. Beans was qualified to be named the park after. According to my rules and regulations of what I have found, he does not. I know of 99% of the things that he has done bad, they did not concern the community. But that's not why I'm here after listening to the attorney. But I will have a report, I will come back after I meet up with Mr. McIntyre and what he responds to me concerning how Mr. Dedar Beans's name was chosen. Now, the things in there that comes out, as you know, a lot of things are supposed to be confidential and a lot of things are not. Now, you know, how did the city came up with somebody coming up with the name? And nobody else in the community knew about it but somebody that came up to the, Mr. McIntyre, I would say, to propose that they have a name for it? Why wasn't everybody else notified to name that? But in any case, I will be meeting with Mr. McIntyre. I will try to make an appointment with him, and I will be back on the next meeting to let you know what is going on. In my opinion, that name should not be there. The park in Yuba City does not deserve a name of Dedar S. Beans, period. And I will, you know, as the saying goes, you know, a lot of things are looking back at it and everything. As I mentioned before the last meeting, whatever that you know about Punjabi, 90% throw it out because you don't know it. Now, which 90% you threw out, we don't know. It may be 95%. Now, you threw five good, 5% of the good one, 5% of the bad one you kept. So in any case, I am willing to let anybody who wants to know what actually is going on and what actually is not. Majority of it is hearsay. Somebody said this, well, therefore it is right. No, it's not. So therefore, that, trying to go any further, I will set up an appointment with Mr. McIntyre within this week, and we will go through it. And then I will come back on the next meeting and let you know, you know, what else is going on. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to speakers' cards. Ms. Essman, we have you for wanting to speak now. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name's Heather Essman, 22 Lincoln Road. I live in Yuba City. And I had, did you have the handouts? Okay, so I brought these to you. I actually gave a few of you that in an email, but I didn't get a response, so I thought I would come to the meeting. So if you can, look at the very last page. It shows basically the area that I'm talking about, which is south of Franklin and west of 99. So as a resident and homeowner of one of the areas most impacted by all the recent annexations, quite a few actually, I wanted to explain to you why the lack of services bothers me so much. So, and I'm not a pizza lover, but there is only one pizza place that will deliver to me where I live. Not even the Chinese food place that we loved on Bog and, it closed now, but Bog and Garden Highway would deliver to us. We always had to go and pick up everything. We have nothing south of Winko on the west side of the highway besides Walgreens Center across from the school from Walton. No cafes, no restaurants, no grocery stores, not even fast food. This area was planned and built 20 years ago with little thought to the daily needs of the residents who had moved there. The east side of 99 doesn't cover this much better. Until the recently opened Dollar General, only the shopping center at Bog and Garden High was available to all the tract homes built and thousands of residents. We learned from the Blue Zones Project presentation in March that, yeah, this year, that areas where we move naturally and eat healthily help us live a longer, better life. To quote the presentation, residents of Blue Zones make healthy choices because those choices are easy, even unavoidable, in their surroundings. The gas station I have down the street doesn't sell a variety of fruits and vegetables, but has plenty of less healthy options to offer the kids and families during school drop-offs and pickup. Also, to address sustainability, the National EPA Smart Growth Approaches, which is also on one of those pages that I give you, cover a range of development and conservation strategies to help protect our health and natural environment and make our communities more attractive, economically stronger, and more socially diverse. There are plenty of examples and ideas that our city can implement if we strive to do so. So I'd like to make a recommendation. We, the city administration, city residents, and even local developers need to rethink how we plan for the future. I'm not suggesting we spend exorbitant amounts of money for something that another council will rescind later, like the Lincoln East specific plan. I'm suggesting that maybe we could have a specific ad hoc committee to discuss development priorities and what the residents need in the development of the annexed areas, using some of the work of the Blue Zones Project Concepts or the EPA's Smart Growth Initiatives. Or we could have community workshops to get input, like when this was done in 2019. Or maybe you have some other idea on how to make this area a better place through planning, zoning, and sustainable development. Then also, oh, darn. Domain Estates, there's a mistake. Please make sure that they remove it. African sumac is an invasive species. It shouldn't be in there. It's not in our, it's not in our, we have two approved Tree City Guides. The city knows that. Those, the plants that were in that plan are not on either one of these guides. So I don't have a problem with fotinia or some of the other plants there, but as one of the Tree City advisories, please do not plant African sumac. It is an invasive species, and you can never get rid of it. It just seeds everywhere. It's a disaster. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another card, and that is from Raji Tumber.
Hello, council members. I support Piarra Joel with a continued effort to rename the park next to Harder Road. The name should represent this country as standing united with no one above another. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public here tonight? Any other comments from the public? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move on to Agenda Items Three through, get it right. There's a lot of them. Three through 13. Thank you. These are the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine. It can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do I have any questions or comments from the council at this time?
Through to the mayor. One brief clarification on Item Number Four, which is Domain Estates. The subdivision improvement agreement will be dated April 30th, 2022. Thank you.
Duly noted. April 30th?
Yes.
Okay. With the note, the noted change on Item Four. Is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
Already said, no African sumac.
Okay. Then I'm bringing it back to the council for further comments, questions, or action.
To the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to approve Items Three through 13 with the adjustment on, correction on Item Number Four.
I have a motion from the vice mayor. Do I have a second?
Second the Consent Calendar items, mayor.
Okay, I have a second from Councilwoman Espandola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. We will move on to Business Item 14, and this is the adoption of the city of Yuba City's fiscal year 2022-2023 operational and capital budgets and fiscal year 2022-2023 appropriations limit. Mr. Spencer Morrison, Finance Director, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. This will be a high-level recap of information that was available last week, May 24th. And for a more detailed review, I would like to remind the public that there is a recording of that session on YouTube. You can find that on the city's website as well. So Yuba City does have a thorough budget process. Takes several months. Starts with sound guidance from the departments. The finance ensures funds are available. An ad hoc committee made up of two council members and the city manager and myself add perspective. The city manager makes recommendations that ensures vision. We do have a public review at the budget study session, and tonight we're going to work to put the plan in place. We did experience savings from vacancies and supply chain issues in 2021, and we expect a repeat in 2122. We have added positions to this budget in the proposed budget, and we're watching sales tax carefully as it's still robust, but it's starting to flatten just a little bit in the last two quarters of this fiscal year. And we still have a great number of vacancies. Our vacancy rate sits today right around 10%. And we do expect that we have cash on hand that will grow over time. We do have a very small but a structural surplus. We expect that that's going to be an ongoing thing. We're looking at revenues of about $52.5 million, and expenditures just underneath revenues at $52,535,300. We do have a healthy bunch of reserves right now. The Healthy Cities Reserve, which is something that we choose to do as a city, to have 15% of the fiscal year held in reserve. So that's for 2223, that will be seven point, almost 7.9 million. And there are other discretionary general funds that we consider to be reserves as well, but they, there is an opportunity cost to utilizing these reserves. One of those is the Vehicle Replacement Fund. We also have a Pension Stabilization Fund to help offset pension costs. We have Development Impact Fee Loans from some earlier practice, years prior practice, and General Fund CIP of about $1.2 million after allocating the proposed projects this year. And then we do still have about $7 million in ARPA HR1319 funds that are not spoken for yet. This is just a historical graph of the revenues on the General Fund. You can see that revenues have been climbing pretty steadily, and our projected revenues are flattening just a little bit. That's probably the conservative look. Hard to say what's going to happen in the coming years. It's been pretty volatile to this point. Expenses follow the same trend, just continually climbing, trying to serve council's priorities and the priorities of the community. On the Enterprise Fund side, you can see that the Water Fund expenditures are growing in purple. Revenues are still covering in orange. But you can see that in the, you can see that as we get into the fiscal year 2223, that conservation is expected to reduce our revenues, slow the revenues down a little bit. Very important is this 1.2 down here. That's the debt coverage ratio that we must maintain for bond health per our bond covenants. And the blue line up here is settling in just under, just in the 1.7 range or so. So we do still have a healthy debt coverage ratio. This is just a look at the CIP versus the net revenues versus cash reserves. The Water Fund does have a healthy cash reserve, which is needed to help cover the debt in the future. Similar slide for the wastewater revenues, expenses and debt coverage ratio. You can see a similar trend. Wastewater, as you know, does not have the same impact with conservation as water. And the wastewater fund is comfortably above the debt, the minimum debt coverage ratio of 1.2, just at the 2% range. I should say, the 2 range. Same look for wastewater, CIP, cash reserves, and net revenues. We do have healthy reserves. You can see a climb right here, 1920. That was a great big wastewater plant improvement that was funded by bonds, $23 million bond deal. And after we get past that construction, it starts to, CIP starts to settle back down. And you can see it's easily covered by revenues. Capital acquisitions. We are requesting some new vehicles. These are not the vehicles that we would lease through Enterprise. These are other vehicles at the time. This time, looking for some trailers, some armored equipment, a tower to prune trees, and some other various requests. These are the technology requests for the year. The city hall and the, and city, all the city locations acquire a great number of technological equipment and systems to keep things running, keep things going in the city. And this is a glimpse of just one year's worth of what it takes. And we have some requests from utilities as well for capital acquisitions to make their jobs safer and more efficient. Capital improvement projects for the year are summarized here. We're recommending $2.2 million in General Fund, about $670,000 in TDA LTF, which is local transportation funds, streets and roads at just under $3 million. Water projects would be $3.5 million wastewater, $5.5 million. And other projects funded from other sources are totaling about $9.9 million. And of course, some of that is the ARPA funding. Total capital improvement project requests for this fiscal year from all funds is just under $25 million. Ad hoc did make some great recommendations through the ad hoc committee process. Reduced, they, through their reviews and through discussions with the departments, reduced department requests by just under $0.5 million. Recommended $140,000. We move to the current year, where we are expecting to have a surplus, and reduce personnel requests by $98,000. In the Water Fund, in the wastewater fund, the reductions were much smaller, but $20,500 in water and $10,800 in wastewater. Other recommendations are coming from staff, from my office. I'm recommending to make an additional discretionary payment toward our unfunded actuarial liability for pension of $0.5 million for General Fund. And that would come out of the Pension Stabilization Trust. That would not come directly from the city checkbook. This is money that we've already allocated to, toward pension, and have been holding earning interest. And so I'm making that recommendation. And then that would be for the General Fund and the other miscellaneous funds. The other funds would be water, wastewater, Center Animal Services Authority, and vehicle replacement, I'm sorry, vehicle maintenance. And that would be, their portion would be $325,000. I am recommending to earmark of what we believe is going to be about a $4 million, $4.1 million surplus in the General Fund. I'm recommending earmarking $3.5 million of that to, for future labor increases. And I'm recommending that we move the remainder of the surplus to split between General Fund, I'm sorry, split between Pension Stabilization and CIP as well. So that's, these are all outlined in my resolution before council as well. So I am requesting that you adopt these resolutions. One, to approve the fiscal year 2022-23 operating budget. And next one, to approve the fiscal year 2022-23 capital budget. That's CIP. And approve the GAN appropriations limit for the city as well. And may I address any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. First of all, thank you for all the hard work that you and your team's done. Miss Hale, thank you. Last budget, woo-hoo. So, but just want to say thank you. I know it's a big item to lift. I want to thank the ad hoc before we move on to, because something that this council started three years ago was, I think it's been greatly beneficial to us, is diving in with an ad hoc to fully understand that budget and the budget process so that we don't have the deer in the headlights looks when we're setting up here trying to approve it. So thank you to our ad hoc this year. Thank you, Mr. Morrison, for you and your team. Thank you, Mr. Morrison, for you and your team to to work with us on that. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Yes, sir. Anybody else have a question? You're up, sir.
All right. My comments are going to be hopefully on the for the whole council. This council, three years ago, a little more than three and a half years ago, embarked on a journey with our finance department to really take a good, hard look at the city's budget. Right in the middle of that, of course, was COVID. And and we we had to pivot pretty quickly and and turn on even more conservative and outlook on on our budget. And our finance department, I think, responded well, as did all the city departments. Through our fiscally conservative guidance, and that's the whole council, including the Vice Mayor, who's been with us on this journey now for a year and a half, we we made adequate, we have made adequate decisions that have provided for reserves. We are in the position now where we're either fully or near fully funding our departments again, restoring services. We are in the process of making sure that one of our most important resources, which is our staff, that we're able to recruit top talent as well as retain them. We are actively engaged in that process as we speak. But I think one of the the best things that that we have done is just be able to continue to provide services. We have taken some heat a little bit for for how we spent our money or how we didn't spend our money. But our guiding principle was always, let's make sure that we can provide the roads, the water, the sewer, police and fire. And and we were able to do that. And now we're not only doing that, but we're also growing those. I think it's important to note, as I wind this up, is first of all, thank you to the council. I'm proud to be a part of a group that that navigated not only through some tough economic times, but some really tough COVID times with tough decisions, to continue to move this city in a position where it could provide services to its constituents. I I know there are those out there that will probably take exception, why didn't you spend it on this? Or why didn't you spend it on that? And I get all that. But at the same time, I think we we, you know, we've always tried to do the right thing for the right reasons. The other thing I like to close on is that sometimes I think people don't pay attention to this. And that is, the city not only operates city services, but we also operate some regional things. One is our parks. Okay, we are the the local area that has the majority of the parks, which are utilized by the region, not just Uba City residents. We operate a senior center. We operate the only senior center in both counties. And it is, according to the senior commission folks, highly attended by those in both Uba and Sutter and even Butte County. Finally, I'd say that that the our rec programs, at this particular point in time, anyway, we are the only agency, local governmental agency, that's providing recreation programs. There are some private sector ones out there, I, you know, the soccer leagues, et cetera. But as far as a local governmental agency, as far as I'm, I know, anyway, we are the only ones that's doing swimming, sports, crafts, et cetera. So our budget not only concerns or benefits the citizens of Uba City, but our budget's also supporting the region. And I think sometimes it might be a little bit soapboxy here. We don't get full credit for being able to provide that to our region as well. But to Spencer and Lynn and the rest of the city staff, great job, very fiscally conservative, trust you. Diana, thank you for leading that effort, whether it was at an interim level or or in in this newer, not newer capacity, but current capacity, how's that? And again, finally, to the rest of the council, it's just, it's a good feeling when we're able to do something, pass a budget. We're not, we don't have our hand out to anybody asking for anything. We're taking care of our own and and we're doing it with, you know, within our ability to 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 pay for that. So that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Former Mayor and Councilmember Boomgarden, well said, very well said. So any other comments or questions from the council?
How do you how do you go after, through the mayor, how do you go after our council member here, Boomgarden? You've covered it so well. I think sometimes even I sit here, even though knowing all these things, you kind of have a really good, I know you do have a good way of bringing it back into the aspect of, it's not just Uba City that we're supporting, we're also supporting people or providing a service to people beyond Uba City. And that that's, that's a really good thing to think about. I and and knowing that we can do that. Spencer, Lynn, I'm going to miss you for the short time that you're going to be gone. But the team, your team has always been accommodating, helpful, providing information, even as challenging as my colleagues could be. We are all in the sense, a little bit of a challenge in one way or another. And I mean, it's a good thing. It's not, it's not bad. I think that asking some really hard, difficult questions, looking at perhaps changing some of the process or the way that we do business. And in the three and a half years, what I've heard recently from a lot of community, and it ties it ties all this into the budget, because I just, I've been hearing from the community, some really positive things about the work that our council is doing and our city's doing, in the way that so much transformation of areas of our community is happening. Yes, there's areas that we could do better. I do not disagree with that. But it comes down to knowing how to work with our finances and being able to keep that target of what's best for the city. And as a full council, we have always, I believe, always done what's best for the city. And keeping that kind of work and trusting you and trusting your team and trusting us, I hope that the community trusts us because without your trust, we can't do this work as well as we can. And that's part of the reason I think it's been successful in the areas that we're able to do. And our city manager, we always give her many compliments because with her leadership and the executive team and everyone else, this financial growth that we've done could not have happened without all the work that everyone's contributed. So thank you so much. And the community is seeing those good things that we are doing. And that is encouraging. And I just wanted to share that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments to my right? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. Back to the council for further comments or action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move the adoptions, city attorney, I have to read them all out, right? Or A, B, C?
A, B, C works in this instance.
All right, thank you. All right, I move to adopt A, B, C.
I have a motion to approve 14A, B, and C. Do I have a second? Is that Councilmember Harris? Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve 14A, B, and C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Morrison. We will move on to Agenda Item 15. This is the Mayor-Vice Mayor Rotation Policy. And Mr. Chaffin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep this brief. As you may recall, we discussed this extensively at the last meeting. We're we're moving to a districting process from at-large elections, which was resulting in updates to our rotation policy for mayor and vice mayor. The council provided initial direction at the last meeting and directed me to come back with implementing resolutions or ordinances that would carry that forward. We have prepared a resolution and ordinance to implement the council's initial direction. They establish a policy to set up a transparent process where all districts have the opportunity to be represented by either mayor or vice mayor or both on a rotation policy. And it also is a process that promotes experienced leadership. Additional details are in the staff report. I can discuss them if you have any questions. If the council is inclined to go forward, it needs to take two steps. One is to introduce the ordinance by its title, so it'll have to be read out. And the other one is to adopt the resolution that has also the policy. And you will note on that resolution, it has some blanks as to the amount of experience that the council may direct that the mayor or vice mayor, vice mayor candidates have prior to doing selection of service. So in other words, how far back in time do you go to count experience? I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. I will ask the council how they would like to proceed with discussion on two separate items because Item 15A, we pretty well covered at the last meeting. Don't anticipate a lot of discussion over 15A, possibly over 15B, there could. So do you want to do them together or separate? What is the pleasure? Do separate. Okay, so is any questions or comments from the council regarding 15A? Okay, hearing none. Any comments from the public? And Ms. Essman, you have wanted to speak on 15, but is it 15A or B that you would like to speak on?
Hello. So I don't know which one this is under. I'm assuming it's under A. So my understanding is then that there's no more election December, right? You all know who's going to be mayor and vice mayor as of 2023 going forward. And I've looked at, so when you did the redistricting, somebody just decided to name one, one. You could have started one with number four. You could have started one at number two. It doesn't matter. So the problem that I have is that, and it's a problem that has been addressed by others, for example, Mr. Buckland, that the representation down south is very sparse. Now, I do agree that we're at least getting from, you're at large, but you are within our area down south. But if we go to this cycle, it starts over with District 1. That means that Mayor Shaw or whoever happens to have this office after December will be Vice Mayor, Mayor again. And then we have number two, who's in area number two. If Councilman Boomgarden decides to run again and wins again, then he'll be mayor again. Although I thought you did an excellent, excellent job. Nothing to do with that. It has to do with the fact that there's just not going to be the representation. Please start somewhere else. You don't have to start with one. You can say, okay, let's start with, we'll start with two, we'll start with four, he's doing four, we'll do five. The problem with five, obviously, is that there's no election until then, and then they won't have the one year behind them. So let's start with three. Why can't we start with some other area instead of one and two and going down? Harris is also from that area. You were mayor twice. So everybody up north, you, have you guys come down to us? Do you know what kind of stuff that we have to? There's nothing down there. That's why we're all going up Walton. That's why Walton looks like that. That's the only way that we can get anywhere. We have to go to Walmart to go up that way. You've got to go up Walton, or you've got to go down O'Leary. And I mean, I'm surprised that the the fire people aren't screaming because the road there is so bad. I don't know how they get through there. It's, we need representation. So please, don't, don't start with one. Think of the math. See if you can't start with three. Start with something else, but just so that we can avoid having, it's going to be one, two, and then three. So that's three years potentially before we even get a chance to have representation from Area 5 or Area 3, if that makes sense. Deer in headlights. Do you understand what I'm saying? You're going to have really mad people from Area 5 here if you're not careful. So please just think about it.
Any other comments from the public? Mr. Chaffin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If I could just offer some clarifications. One thing about this process is, there is nobody currently selected for districts 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. There, we don't even know who's going to run at this point. Nobody's officially submitted their papers. The council has been moving forward early, so it takes the politics out of the process. The other thing the council tried to do to take the politics out of the process is the numbering of the districts was actually selected by an independent demographer who made the recommendations to the council as to how they could be numbered. Again, there is no perfect process. And you can pick number 1, 2, 3, 4, or number them any way. But at least from the demographer's perspective, based on the population counts and how things were put together, it was the demographer's opinion to number them districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 as the way they did it. Now, the council accepted that recommendation because of, I'm assuming, because it was an independent third party who made that in an effort to keep the politics out of the process. With regards to the rotation as to where we start, the council has a lot of flexibility. And one thing I have found, however, is keep it simple. So if you're going to start at a number, you start at 1, then go to 2, then 3, then 4, then 5. If you start jumping around 1, 5, 2, you know, 7, whatever it may be, it makes it very difficult for the public to understand, and it doesn't result in as a transparent process. So in this particular case, based upon the numbers from our independent demographer as to where they started, we looked at how that process would lead in, consistent with the council's direction, that you want experience. You don't want a green mayor newly elected coming into office. And if that is in your intent, really, the only way you can do that is to start at District 1, then go to 2, then 3. And the reason for that is, is if we started at District 2, there would not be adequate time for the vice mayor to get the requisite experience before becoming mayor. And then the next vice mayor should be from District 4, but nobody's elected from District 4 yet. So it would result in a situation where it'd go back to District 1 anyway. And it would even be longer for districts 4 and 5 before they got representation from those areas. So I'm not saying the current process is perfect by any stretch of the imagination, but it is the fastest way for districts 4 and 5 to be and get representation and an opportunity for mayor and vice mayor based upon the system that was recommended by the city's independent demographer. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Mr. Chaffin, just one question for you as well. The policy that you wrote based upon the the demographers and the council's direction, it's it's somewhat automatic, but it's still not automatic because there's provisions in there. The mayor, the vice mayor has to be elected by the council, and there are provisions that if there is everything from basically conduct unbecoming to people recusing themselves and not assuming the office, that it could rotate through. So it's it's somewhat automatic, but there's still a process, correct?
That's correct. There, stuff happens, for the lack of a better word. You you never know when there's a recall or someone unfortunately passes away, or they just don't have the resources or even maybe the physical capacity in order to serve. And so that's yet another reason to start at 1, because if you start skipping right off at the beginning, you're going to end up in districts 3 and 4, and nobody's been elected there yet. So you'd have to go back to 1 again anyway. So that's the recommendation to start at 1 if you're inclined to move forward.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
The mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for the city attorney. So on on Item 15B, and you have have some experience in the other jurisdictions, what numbers do you typically see?
Okay.
Did I make a suggestion?
Vice Mayor, we're taking them separate, so we're doing 15A right now.
Oh, I apologize.
Thank you.
Any question or comment on 15A?
Through you.
Then we're.
Yeah. Through the chair, thank you. The the part, there is no, there's, there's a process, I think this process is much more clear than what we have now and moving forward. It is not the perfect scenario, but we have a direction where personally, I was a bit frustrated the first year. And now I think it's getting there. We're getting there. We're getting better. There is sections in here that I think gives us opportunity to kind of, as a council together, consider if there is needing to change, you know, if the minimum qualifications aren't there, where it says unusual circumstances, like include violation of law or city policy, pending investigations if someone's, you know, off doing something. There's also, you know, lack of leadership or communication skills. So as a council, we would look at all of those things, excessive absences, you know, from meetings or so on, that those things would be considered, hopefully, in the by each of us, to then weigh our own decisions together on how that rotation would come. And also then, based on the second part that we're going to talk about, years of 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 service of what we we can and can't do. Not the best, but you know, here's what one thing about this is if we find it's not the best work that we can, we can always come back. In a year or two, because we haven't explored this yet, we're launching into it, we could change. We could change it if, if we happen to be the same here again, or if not, if the present, next council can make those, those changes in the future. They can amend and change the regulations and the policies. Thank you.
Any other comments? Are we ready for action? Okay, then we're looking for a motion.
You want me to read all this?
Yes.
Through the mayor, I'd like to introduce a motion to approve item A. Introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Yuba City, California, amending Section 2-1.01G of Chapter One of Title II of the Yuba City Municipal Code. Mayor/Mayor Pro Tem Rotation by Title Only and waive the first reading.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Councilmember Boom Garden, a second by Councilmember Esmondola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Let's go to item 15B, and back to you, Mr. Chaffin.
Thank you. Nothing additional to add, but I can certainly answer any questions that anyone may have in the council right now.
Mr. Vice Mayor, now it's 15B.
Do I have to repeat the question?
You're assuming I'm smart enough to remember it. I actually have forgotten it already. I'm sorry.
Oh, and I apologize. I jumped the gun on that. My question had regarding 15B was, and you do have quite a bit of experience on this, I'm assuming. In other jurisdictions, what is the norm on years?
And you're talking about years of prior service before they become a mayor or vice mayor. It varies.
I was afraid you were going to say that.
And it, and it varies based upon the activity of the council. If you have a council that's primarily ceremonial, they typically don't have it. It's not, it's very, very common that they don't have any requirements. So you could literally have a brand-new council member be elected and become mayor. That's not unusual. It does happen on occasion. However, if you have a council where the mayor and vice mayor play active roles, where you have council members that actually, I hesitate to say this, don't, not as a slam to other jurisdictions, but council members that actually work and are on committees, that are doing more than what I would call the, you know, kiss the baby, shake the hand sort of things, they usually require more experience. And it's common, well, maybe I should say, it's not unusual to see that experience be at least a couple of years for mayor and at least one year for vice mayor, so that they get a chance to get a run-up and get used to what's going on. Now, that being said, the question is, can prior service count? Some, it's, it's a policy call for you guys. Some say, yeah, you know, we want you to be having been involved at least the last couple of years or last four years, so you're not completely green. The question is, is how much changes over a period of time? If you have an active council that is working hard, and somebody comes in as mayor, and it's been four years, or eight years, or 10 years since they've sat on the council, are they up to speed? Now, if you have a comfort level with those numbers, that's perfectly fine. If you want somebody who's actually been around more recently, I would suggest a smaller number. But I actually don't have a recommendation for you as to that number.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, hearing none. Is there any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
So were you supposed to debate right now and then, because nobody said how many years yet?
No, we haven't. We have the presentation, our questions, your comments, then we bring back for debate.
All right. So obviously, my understanding, five districts, four years. Then you'd have to have at least five years for mayor in order for a mayor to have been, let's say, not won the election, then four years in addition to that. Does that make sense? So if, say, for example, I'm trying to think of somebody who, Manny Cardoza lost the last time. If he comes back and wins the next time, like four years down the road, because obviously you're going to, you're only going to be in your district. You're not going to be able to go to another district to, to try it, maybe, he might move. But most people would end up staying in the district they're in. They would be there for four years. So you couldn't make it less, four years or less. It would be very difficult for somebody to be, so it has to be more than four years. And since there's five districts, it would be nice to have at least five. You'd have to have that additional year, right, in order to add that on? Just saying, I don't know what you're going to say. You'd have to basically have to have six for the mayor and five for the vice mayor, because you'd want to have two years for the mayor to have at least had that in the background. And there's no way they would have been able to do that within five years. Does that make sense? They can't do two years of service within the last five years if they weren't elected within the last four. Right? Four plus two is six. Okay, anyways.
Any other comments? Back to the council for any comments or questions.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend two years' experience for mayor, one year for vice mayor.
Okay, is that in the form of a motion, or is that just, okay?
Through the mayor? I apologize.
I had a, Ms. Esmondola?
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree. What, Councilmember Harris, you said two, two and one? I think two and one is, the, the vice, yeah, so the vice mayor has to have a full year and, and then could rotate, would, would that be counted into the mayor year, you know?
Yeah, I would, what I would understand is one year experience to be vice mayor, then you become vice mayor, then you have a year as vice mayor.
Oh, got it.
And you have your two as mayor.
Got it. Okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, at least one year.
Yeah.
Councilmember could be vice, then you have the second year could be mayor. That's three, about three years total, if you started out and ended up, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, two and one.
Through the mayor, if I could ask clarification. So Councilmember Harris, what you're saying is any candidate for vice mayor would have to have one year experience, and any candidate for mayor would have to have two years' experience. Did you have, I, I think that's a separate issue from whether prior experience can count towards those amounts. I didn't know if you had any clarification on that.
My comment was not based on prior experience, just, just in general. We can get to that. I'm sure we will. But I was just talking about in general for those two.
Councilmember Boom Garden?
So that's the nature of my question, and I think it goes to you, Mr. Chaffin, is the item B doesn't reference prior or, or current. So to me, if I'm listening to Councilman Harris's, it's two years no matter what, current. It has to be current, not can't, you're not taking into consideration any past. Okay, so is, is that, is that your, I'm understanding it that way?
Right.
We're not, we're not counting, you know, if someone was a councilman.
Say if someone was, gets seated in November or whatever, and they were a council member, and they have two years of experience, because they walk right into the mayoral chair.
Right.
I would say no.
Yeah, okay, then I'm on the same page with you, sir.
Vice Mayor? And I, I was thinking the same thing you guys were as far as this, because going back to what Mr. Chaffin said, if you have a ceremonial council, it really doesn't matter, because it's just purely ceremonial. But I go back to the budget, I go back to all the hard work that the five of us has done. Wade, you've been with us the past year and a half, and Manny before that. But we were, we're a very active council, and if you're out two years, you probably don't have a real clue what's going on. And we've seen that with people that have stood up in the chambers that's been out for a year to four years. And there's a disconnect, and it's just because the good intentions may be there, but this council moves at such a rapid pace with the items we've done. So I would fully agree myself. So if we're going to move forward, then we need a motion to move this forward. Oh, Mr. Chaffin?
Through the mayor, for the purposes of the resolution, if I'm understanding where the council is going on this, it would be prior to selection, the mayor must have served at least two years on the council within the last two years. And prior to selection, the vice mayor must have served at least one year on the city council within the last year in order to be eligible to serve as a vice mayor.
I believe that is what the intent across the board is.
Okay, thank you.
Is that what that says, though?
If, if you add in the numbers as you speak to add two, and then one, that will be what it says.
Okay.
That's where I was struggling.
All right, so do we have a motion?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt a resolution of the City Council, the, of City of Yuba City, California, establish a process for selection of mayor and vice mayor for a district-based system of elections with the requirement the mayor must have served on the, on the council within the last two years, and the vice mayor within the last one year, one years, in order to be eligible for appointment.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by the vice mayor and a second by Councilmember Harris. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chaffin, for your work on that. We will go to future agenda items. This is a chance to discuss anything that came up for possible future. Does any council member have any future agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to our reports, and we'll start with the city manager's report.
Thank you. So as I was home at lunch today, I had somebody come to my door and put a door hanger on the door for water conservation. So staff has started to distribute those water conservation door hangers. And I strongly encourage people, if you don't know how to change your irrigation controller, please reach out to Public Works. They will help change your irrigation controller to get you on the Monday, Thursday irrigation schedule. As I'm walking around in my neighborhood, I see a lot of people watering on the wrong days, and I just hate to see people start to get citations because either they don't know how to change it, or they're not aware of the requirements. But now that the door hangers are being distributed, there should not be any reason that people don't know. Number two, we will be having a Fourth of July Children's Parade again, and the Fire Department and Community Services Department are coordinating that event, so more details to come. And then last week, I participated in the Blue Zones Built Environment Summit along with Ben Moody and Brad McIntyre. And I think that we were all very impressed by the summit. And it was great cooperation and collaboration amongst all of the local agencies. There was a SECOG rep that was there, and it really highlighted, you know, the, there's some regional projects that we can work on. So I look forward to continuing to work on the Blue Zones project. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. We'll bring it back to the council reports. Councilmember Esmondola?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm glad you went in order this time. I appreciate it. So Feather River Air Quality Management District meeting yesterday was a fun one. We had 23 agenda items. So it was a little longer than what we normally have here. But we managed to get done within an hour and a half, so it was a bit impressive in that. We reviewed the proposed budget for 2023, unanimously passed that budget, which is about $5 million total that we have there. PG&E settlement for penalties, this came out of, used, that PG&E used outdated generators in Marizil. So we had a settlement, a lawsuit against him, and we, we won, or we settled. I call it we won. $1,236,895.38 that is coming to us, Feather River Air Quality District. Unanimously supported and voted yes for the Feather River West Levy Assessment. And if, I just want to say, if you haven't voted, vote for that, if you're in that area. Also, Ben, I wanted to let you know that I checked with Feather River Staffing on the grant that we submitted for the two ChargePoint electric vehicle charging stations that Councilman Boom Garden and others in our community were like, hey, we need some charging stations. Looks, 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 looks good. We could, we could have some, maybe, crossing the fingers. We, we meet their higher level of qualifications. And so if we get that, we'll know by the end of this month. And so Plumas Street Water Tower parking and Gap Lot is where we're proposing to put those in. And they were very happy to hear that Yuba City submitted a grant for, for this. And so that's how we do things regionally. So good work. Thank you, Ben and the team. The Regional Water Authority, I was, participated in the advocacy on the state level. We were, right now, you know, it's bills, budget. There was a resolution that was proposed on emergency regulations. I forwarded that actually today, I forgot to forward it last month, to Diana and Ben for them to take a look at it and the implications for our city. And that ties into that whole conservation of water urban areas. State budget updates were also discussed. We had an executive committee meeting. And again, it really all tied into legislation and regulatory updates. There's a lot of activity in the drought water arena. The governor is meeting frequently with a, a lot of water agency groups throughout the state and State Water Board as well, and DWR. And more to hopefully report on discussions there. The city, I participated along with our council budget workshop that Spencer did with his team. And fantastic job, and that's why it was pretty painless for us to pass it today, because Spencer reviewed it with us before. We all were happy to, I hear something in the background, Brian? Oh, I thought it was, okay. I don't know. Were you all thinking that same thing? Yeah.
I like a base set.
That's awesome. Okay, I love it. We all helped out. Cleanup Day, and Scott Chandler did an amazing job with his team organizing, putting us all to work. And really, personally, I received a lot of feedback from the community about how nice our work, how appreciated the work was from people that were paid, you know, staff, volunteer staff came and toured. And, and when my mom, when my mom says that the Walmart area looked so much nicer, and that whole, that made me really feel good about all her work, because my mom is golden. So any high recommendations from my mama is good. The Association of Water, California Water Agencies, we continue to work on the formation of the foundation through the Steering Committee. We're in the initial filing stages of establishing the 501(c)(3). There's a lot of work behind that. On top of that, with the Regional Two and Regional Four of the Aqua Association, we toured the Shasta Dam, which was extremely, it was hard and, and very, it hurt, deeply hurt my soul to see how low the water of the Shasta Dam is, 40% capacity. The Bureau of Reclamation staff said that this is a historical low. And how, they've seen this low before, but there's differences in this, how, how low the dam is is because of the river streams. Waters have higher regulations, and the demand of water as humans in communities has increased when they initially built that dam. We also heard from Jeff Sutton, who is, if you haven't met Dan, excuse me, Jeff, he, he's dynamite. He's like this guy with such an amazing amount of information and a go-to guy on water, vice chair of the Sites Project JPA. And he's the general manager of the Tahima-Cullusa Canal Authority. And Jeff and I had connections that once we connected, we then, we both grew up in Colusa. We both have family connections, and we're both connected into the family of farming. And now we're connected by water, which is really good. The work that we're doing together as a region and as a community is that he provided great insights about the water, water infrastructure, the impacts of, on agriculture, and the need for us to work closely in partnership with diverse communities to help with this drought. Because if we don't do this in a sense of all of us pitching in, if the Mother Nature doesn't cooperate with us in the fall, the drought could be into, you know, we're into a third year and a fourth year would be just devastating. As we look at our region from water rich in this moment, Yuba County is doing really well and happy that they are. Sutter County, we're managing. Colusa County, Tahima, and those other areas are really in challenging situations. Recently, they had Assembly Member Cecilia Aguilar have a meeting with them in Colusa to discuss the impacts of the drought in the Colusa County area and extending into our Sutter, and trying to find ways to not over-regulate. our Sutter, and trying to find ways to not over-regulate by legislation and by the governor, trying to have some reasonable decisions be made so that drought, this issue of drought doesn't, conservation is a good thing for all of us to do, but to be honest, the conservation isn't gonna make a dent unless everyone conserves, and that's gonna be tough. We need the rain, we need the snow, we need water management underground and the sites reservoir. And I know that this is an item that is very important to all of us as a council, and as a council, I say, let's find ways that we can work together more on this water arena, the drought, because it's gonna impact us, even if with our great development projects, it'll impact with the increase of, of gasoline prices, and it'll impact that people are not gonna have jobs in the agriculture industry. So I, I just wanted to share some of those highlights. Any, any thoughts or comments that I, that we can discuss here openly with, with our public? Okay, thank you.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I participated in the, through SECOG, the Regional Trails Kickoff Event on Bike to Work Day, coordinated with SECOG staff and Mr. McIntyre. We did a, shot a live video out on the bike trail in celebration of that, was coordinated with a lot of other municipalities that were doing the same thing. And so it was kind of a, a fun event to be a part of. SECOG meeting, we primarily, we approved the budget for the overall work program for fiscal year '22 and '23. I'm on the Land Use Natural Resources Subcommittee through SECOG, and we reviewed and voted on the revised guidelines for the Green Means Go program. That was our primary action item in this last meeting. As Grace said, a great job on the budget workshop, attended that, very informative, very well done, very thorough, and much appreciated. So it was, that was a good thing to be a part of. Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture continues to be very active in the community. If you get the postcards, or if you don't get them, please sign up for them. There's a lot of things to be doing, and they, they have the entire continuum of different types of ways, whether it's spoken word, or visual arts, or performing arts, you name it, they, they really make an effort of being a part in the community, and they're doing a great job with that. Went to the Hard Rock Live Event Grand Opening out in Wheatland. That was a very impressive facility they have out there, gonna be a good amenity for the, for the community, and was also honored to be asked to do the commencement address for Yuba City Charter School, both the eighth grade and high school classes. So I, I did that for them, and was, like last time, was a very good experience. Been participating in Habitat for Humanity Calls regarding Home Key Projects, looking for a location suitable for their next project regarding, I guess we homeless, but it would be some low-income housing projects in, in the community. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boomgarden?
Thanks. I'm gonna rip through these. As Councilman Harris mentioned, he, myself, and the city manager have been meeting with Scott Thurman and others in regards to potential project Home Key sites. There is some progress being made, and hopefully we can land on a site here shortly. I'm part of the Regional Housing Authority. We did approve the levy assessment for all the properties that the Regional Housing Authority has responsibility for. Attended a senior commission meeting. That's a pretty active group over there, and they do have a lot of things going on at the senior center, and it is becoming more and more populated by people coming to, to visit it as we continue to emerge out of, out of the COVID restrictions. Member of the Sutter County Children's, oh gosh, I already forgot the name. Anyway, the Helmers Family Commission, thank you. Michelle Blake and that crowd over there, they're doing so many good things, and they, you know, it's amazing to me, and this is a group that's focused on, on zero to five years old, and doing some fabulous things in the community. I'll probably see if she can come and speak to us, because I think it would be worthwhile for, for you to hear all the things they've got going on through her, not me. Ribbon cutting with the mayor at, at Pink Lux. Business has been, salon-type business, been in business now for three years, and survived COVID, which is, I think, a, a, a good thing. Budget workshops, we've talked about that. I, I'm going to try to set up another meeting with Chris Jamlin from Adventist Health. There's still a lot of scuttle around town in regards to the use of that, of the, the new, if you will, the tower over there, and I know that he's been signaling he wanted to meet with me, and I want to meet with him. So we'll continue those discussions. And this week, we'll be, I'll be meeting with the League of Cities Transportation, Communications, and Public Works as we get closer and closer to the legislation. And finally, happy birthday there, Chief Alexander. Your badge is flashing and it's blinding me, but other than that, I know it was probably intentional, but that's okay, too. But anyway, happy birthday. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna conclude.
Thank you, sir. Vice mayor.
Thank you, mayor. I will be brief. Started off with the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, where we're working with the community to put together a team advisory, and I'm sure the, the mayor will expand on that. Yuba Sutter Transit, we, we approved the operating capital budget. We looked at some funding applications and also performance review for the director. Budget workshop, thank you, Mr. Spencer, for that, very informative. As was mentioned before, the Cleanup Day. Mr. Moody and I were walking, what's the name of that street? Little alley behind, huh? Little, little alley behind Popeyes, and it was so cool, because the, we had people coming out to us and saying, what are you guys doing back here? And so it was kind of a, love, love participating in that, because I feel like it made, it does make a difference. I was privileged to be asked to interview for the county for the lieutenant's position, which they did choose an applicant for that. As we got closer to Memorial Day, I was very moved by the service over at Calvary Temple. Haven't done that in a long, long time. Pastor C. once again, and his staff, just knocked it out of the park. So thank them for that. And also attended the memorial service at Sutter Cemetery with the sheriff, and that's always a moving ser, service. I attended the River Valley High School graduation. Thankfully, it was cool, wasn't 150 like it normally is. And the mayor and I, and his wife, attended the change of command at the Air Force Base today. Colonel Fox is moving on to better things, bigger things, and Colonel Church is taking over. Lastly, I have to give a huge props shout-out to our city staff from SASSA. They had an emergency this month that, I don't know if anybody signed up for that. We had an incident out in Pleasant Grove where on no notice, they had to shuttle 30 to 40 horses, countless dogs, animals, llamas, alpacas, parakeets, you name it, and with their, their staff running on little or no sleep, wow. And I was, yeah, hope, hope you pass that on to them, because it was quite an achievement. And with that, I'll, that's it.
All right, thank you. And vice mayor, I'm still confused with something. Did you interview to become a lieutenant, or?
They wouldn't accept my application.
Okay.
I participated in the interviewing process.
Gotcha. As a panelist. All right. It's been, May has been an extremely busy month. Last few weeks continued on. Transit, as the vice mayor reported, RWM a budget update. We're rescheduling this, or actually, the next meeting that comes up in two Thursdays will be rescheduled to the 23rd, I believe it is, and that is because we will be actually interviewing a final candidate for the new executive, as those two are breaking apart as far as they're gonna be independent versus mixed together. Vice mayor said, grateful nation remembers as a veteran going to that, it's very, very moving. Thank you to Calvary and their entire team. It touches a lot of people, and if you ever have a chance to go, go, because it's very moving, and you can hear the tears of healing that rose through a lot of the veterans, especially the ones from the Vietnam era, because they were pretty much disrespected when they came home, and we owe them a huge debt of gratitude, because they were still protecting our country, and, and it's very, very moving. Held a meeting between the city, the county, GSEC, and SECOG, and that was the first meeting of many that's going to, to happen. We talked about regionality a little bit earlier, and this is how you get things done. And this is kind of a first, bringing us all together, and we're gonna see if we can get some synergy coming north on 99, further than Sutter Point, up here to where we're at. As Ms. Langley said, one of the questions that we needed to know was, what don't we know? And that makes us more attractive up here. So we're working with that. Hopefully, that will spur some more economic activity and job growth up the 99 corridor. So we'll have more of those coming. Ribbon cuttings, the Intergovernmental Relations, or as I call it, the IRK. Moving forward, update there between the city and the county, we have selected our 10 people to be with us in an advisory capacity, to walk on a journey to figure out the overnight parking, because the intent was never, we're not gonna do anything. It was a reset, pause, bring the community in, let's set down. So now we're just in the process of trying to get the meeting set up, notifying everyone, and we're hoping to move forward very quickly with that to see what kind of ideas and recommendations they would have. Change of command, Colonel Fox, wish you the very best, and Colonel Church spoke to him afterwards, and we will be having him here in the future, as he very much wants to engage with the city of Yuba City. He brings a family with him, a wife, and two small daughters. So look forward to interacting there, and looking forward to all of you meeting him. And a little history on him, he actually was a fighter pilot. So that's a, they're, they're kind of like our police and fire top gun, yeah, he's kind of the Tom Cruise type, so. So I think he's gonna be a great commander out there, so. Let's see, where are we at? We had the, the city cleanup day. The biggest thing of the city cleanup day is I just want to say thanks to our incredible employees, because that was not council-led, it was not anything from us, it was employee-led, and thank you for letting us come alongside. The idea came from them, the promotion came from them, the volunteer came from them, and we partnered with them and made a dent in some areas in our city. So please take that back to our team and let them know we are just forever grateful for their leadership during this and their commitment to our city. Had the honor of attending Yuba City High School's graduation, and, and then final, two final things. Home Key, I'm very pleased with what's going on as one of five that we're engaged at the council. That was the one thing that was missing last time, and people could not quite understand it, but it was kind of rushed in and didn't have all the answers, and we're engaged early, and we're working on this, and I appreciate you two gentlemen following through with that. And then lastly, I will be at the GSEC retreat on Thursday, and hopefully be bringing back some, some good news there. I've already seen some of the stats, and the greater Sacramento region is really poised to, to move forward and be a great leader. That's why we're trying to get GSEC, SECOG, the county and the city all together, so that we can look at that. So with that, I have nothing else to report, except we will be going back into closed session. So is there anything else from the council? With that, we will move back into closed session.